Good evening, everyone. It's 6 o'clock, so that means, and it's the first Wednesday in May, so that means it's time for the regular Beaver Creek City Planning Commission meeting. And I will call it to order and ask for a roll call, please. Ma'am?
Mr. Ayers?
Here.
Mr. Height?
Here.
Mr. Loftus?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Self?
Here.
Okay, we're all here. And agenda approval? I think we have one change coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, item VB, 5B. The applicant has requested to table the application, it's the freestanding emergency room. So, in order to not have to re-advertise in the paper, we'd like you to call the case open still and then have someone make a motion to table.
Okay, fine.
Make a motion to table and then continue the public hearing until next month.
Roger that, okay.
Thanks.
We can do that. Any other changes? That's it? Okay. I will ask then for a motion to approve with the change. Gentlemen?
Mr. -- go ahead.
Don't argue.
No, no, go ahead.
No, come on, this is all you.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda with the additions, or the corrections, I guess.
Do you want to second it as well? I'll second it.
You can do third.
Thank you. Oh, we got a crowd tonight. By general consensus, gentlemen, we're good? Okay. Last month's minutes from 7 April, all good? Any corrections, additions, changes? Okay, I need a motion for that, please. Your turn. Alex?
Mr. Chair. I motion to approve the April 7, 2021 minutes.
Mr. Chair, I say?
I have a motion and a second. We'll do that by general consensus. Thank you very much. Okay, this evening, we have three public hearings on the agenda and two subdivisions. So, without further ado, let's get started with the first one.
This is case number PUD 21-1, specific site plan number two, on an application filed by Nathan Bullinger, 170 East Church Street, Marion, Ohio 43301. The application requests approval of a specific site plan to allow for the development of a three-story independent living facility on 10 acres. The property is located directly west of 3218 Indian Ripple Road, further described as Book Six, Page Seven, Parcels Three and Eight on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. For you all who are here and folks watching on TV, since this is a public hearing, our procedures for public hearings are that we will hear a presentation by the applicant, then the staff will give its report. Once that is done, then we'll open the floor for comments from the audience. Once that, once everyone's had a chance to speak, I'll ask if there are any written input. Once that is done, we'll close the public hearing and we will discuss and eventually vote. So, I presume there is someone here representing Trinity? There he is. Step right on up and tell us what you have in mind.
May I take this off?
Sure. Just keep your distance.
Okay, I'll stay my six feet. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Russ Garber. I'm the architect on the project. I'm with MA Architects. Do you need my address or anything like that for the public record?
Please.
Address for notice is 775 Yard Street, Columbus, Ohio 43212. Again, thanks for having, allowing me to speak. Our client, United Church Homes, is looking to expand their offerings at their Trinity Beaver Creek campus. They currently have housing there for seniors, and it's, they have a high acuity product, more in the healthcare line, assisted living in some folks with memory impairment, along with the existing cottages that they have along the north, along the perimeter. And so, due to the market demand and the interest in the community, they're looking to expand that independent living offering through this apartment building product. For those of you who may not be familiar with all the nomenclature within the senior living continuum, excuse me, independent living is really that first step into dependent custody. There is, there are not healthcare services provided. This is not a healthcare facility. This is a residential facility, but they will be offering services like laundry and house cleaning, and they will have a full-service kitchen. So, it is that, like I said, it is that, that is that first step into moving into a senior campus, and they want to expand that offering. So, there is, as you know, there was a parcel that they had purchased just under 10 acres to the west, and on that is the proposed three-story independent living building. It has 121 units in it. The, there are a mix of two bedrooms and one bedroom with den units. They err on a little bit of a nice-sized unit. There's about a 60, it's pretty close, roughly 60%, 40% split on the one and two bedrooms towards the, I think it's, forgive me, I think it's the 40% two bedrooms and the 60% one bedroom with den. And then there is one, the 121st unit is actually a one-bedroom unit. There is one one-bedroom unit that fits very nicely in the corner. The amenities that they are going to provide there, as I mentioned, there's a full-service commercial kitchen, so there will be a dining room. This dining room will not only be available to the residents in this building, but it 'll also be available to the resident, the other residents on campus. So, it is sized, so that way it could take as another food service offering for the addition, for the cottages that are there, and people quite honestly that live in the independent living, if they are, I'm sorry, the assisted living building, if they wanted to come across the, come across the road to have, to dine there. Inside of the building, they're going to continue with their health and wellness programs. They've got a fitness center in there. And then, they, out in front of the building, in between, you'll see the building was positioned such that the amenity spaces are more towards the front of the building, so that way give it a very hospitality-type of front, and so that way it would be very inviting to the residents who live in the cottages. So, that health and wellness program through maybe exercise programs or other types of events, could be a farmer's market, could be anything you could imagine you could do out on an event lawn, that it would be obviously appropriate for senior citizens. They have that ability to do so. Their health and wellness program doesn't just go through physical fitness, it also goes into, you know, emotional wellness and mental wellness. So, with inside the spaces, you'll, inside the building, there are art rooms and crafts rooms, and there are a maker space, there are spaces to even do podcasts if they wanted to do stuff like that. So, they have really thought about lots of activity and amenity spaces for the residents to live a purposeful and fruitful life and to be part of the greater community, the greater Trinity Beaver Creek campus community. The building has, the site has parking lots, surface lots to the north and the south, and then you'll notice that there are proposed garages. So, there are covered garages on the north, I think there's 16 on the north and 18 on the south, and that's something that we have in the plan that we would like to consider putting in. Some of the residents will drive. There's no reason why they can't, it's just a, it's an apartment building for them. So, we do want to anticipate that there will be some folks who would want covered parking, so that's what's there. You can see on the site engineering, there's a few ponds put in. Those are retention ponds, obviously, for the stormwater and site retention, but they've been positioned such that they become amenities on the space. So, the one up in the north is up there, and just to the south of that where you can see sort of the lawn that kind of comes, if you can forgive my gesturing, it kind of comes as a curve like that in front of the pond and the road, that's where we're considering the flat lawn there for events, things to happen outside. Then the small pond that's down to the south there is actually, it's a little bit more of a reflecting pond size, to be honest. It does have a stormwater function to it, but it's positioned so that as you're sitting in that corner there and you're in the dining room, you can begin to see some of those, what's shaded on the plan there is patio right around there. You could sit outside, have coffee, or have lunch and a sandwich, and you could be able to sit outside and look at the fountain across the pond. And then down below that parking lot to the south there, the lawn is wooded down in there. It's existing wooded, and obviously, we're not going to clear farther down into that. So, the building will be screened well from Indian Ripple Road. Some other things that are considering, that we're considering on this, as you can see that there was an existing parking, there is, not was, there is an existing parking lot in front of the current health center, assisted living building, and there was a desire to realign the entries there. It kind of comes in currently on an angle, which isn't the best approach for some of the seniors, so they wanted to straighten it up and make it a 90 across from the new entry. And then, a lot of that parking lot is just the result of cleaning up the geometry of moving that road, and so sort of repositioning there. So, it's going to be a repaving and a little bit of reorganization of that parking lot there. It's really a pretty simple project in concept. I mean, it's a little over 165,000 square feet, 121 beds, but in concept, it's just providing housing and the first step of custodial care for our senior citizens here in Beaver Creek. So, with that, I'll answer any questions that I, that you might have.
We'll probably have some later for you.
You will?
Thank you very much.
Do you want me to sit down or stay here?
It's staff's turn now.
All right. I guess I should let Randy come on up, so.
That would be smart.
I need my six feet.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. The case you have before you is PUD 21-1. It's specific site plan number two for this PUD. As Planning Commission may recall, when the PUD was established earlier this year, there was a condition that the existing site, as it is, is because, shall be considered specific site plan number one. That's why we're here, at specific site plan number two. What the applicant's requesting is, again, to construct a three-story, 121-unit senior housing facility on about 10 acres of the PUD. The PUD is located down in southeastern Beaver Creek. It's on the north side of Indian Ripple Road, about a mile east of North Fairfield and Indian Ripple. The entire PUD I've highlighted is comprised of three parcels. I've highlighted all three here, and the 10 acres that we're discussing this evening in particular, other than the summary configuration, as the applicant stated, the existing parking, is these two parcels on the west side of the PUD. Again, this was created earlier this year as a rezoning of an old township-era PUD. Thought it was best to clean it up and get it into more modern language amongst the uses that are permitted within the PUD, or nursing homes, assisted living facilities, adult daycare facilities, and retirement communities. And the way the zoning code defines retirement communities are those that are age-restricted at 55 and up. So, what the applicant is requesting here is compatible with the zoning of the property. Seen here is the proposed site plan. This is kind of an easier one to see. The building, the main building, I highlighted in orange here, going to be three stories. It's got a couple of wings. It meets all setback requirements from Indian Ripple, which is down here on the site, from the western property line, obviously, from the eastern property line, and from the northern property line. There's a 50-foot buffer along the western property line and the northern property line. You can see the proposed asphalt pavement is not within that 50-foot buffer, so they do meet all the buffering and setback requirements set forth in the PUD. In terms of parking, they are required to have, well, what they propose is 114 parking spaces in total. 39 of those will be in the two garages, which I've highlighted in orange. We haven't gotten architectural elevations for those garages, but we added a condition that if they do build them, because if they don't build them, they'll just be the surface parking, but if they do build them, they need to be architecturally compatible with the principal structure. Based on the number of parking that they're required for senior facilities, which is three spaces for every two units, the theory is that, you know, senior apartments don't have quite the number of vehicles as a traditional apartment would, less impact on the road, so there's less need for surface parking, but they do meet the minimum requirements set forth in the zoning code for the particular use that they're going for this evening. You can see in gray, I kind of highlighted in gray around the site, they do include a good amount of walking paths, sidewalks, for pedestrian access, not only for the, from the parking lots, but throughout this main courtyard that's behind the building, that you can see that there is pedestrian access, and then around the building, and ultimately out in front of the ponds and in front of the building and into this other detention pond. There's a small circular concrete area, which looks to be a sitting area out in front of that detention pond. We did add condition that they are required to have aeration devices and fountains in this pond so that the water doesn't sit and become unsightly. And here you could see how it fits in with the, there's a single-family residential neighborhood to the north and on the other side of Indian Ripple Road. They're proposing to use the existing access point. We looked into having to move the access point down to this area across from the neighborhood because there's a, there's some site, line of sight issues with the hump. And speaking with a city engineer, we're looking to, in the next four, five years, they're looking to do a road project out here on Indian Ripple to remove that, and if they were to move it now, based on the discussion with the engineer, it would be even more of a sign, hazard at this location with this hump than it would where it is located now. So, again, they're looking to, we're looking to do a project in the, in the next four, five years, again, to remove that hump and that line of sight challenge that's out there right now. The nearest house to this parking area is up here on the northeast corner. It's about 250 feet from the parking lot and about 300 feet from the building, just to give you an idea of the distance is here. In terms of architecture, they're proposing, again, a three-story building. It's a mix of red brick and some multi, two-tone hardy plank siding, so a lot of the gabled ends and the frontage features are this red brick, and then along the linear portions of the site, they have a light-colored hardy plank, which is a cement board siding, and then a darker beige, and that gives it, not only breaks up the horizontal nature of the building, but also gives it layers to break up the vertical building, vertical portion of the building. They did propose to use black and gray asphalt shingles as a, as their roof feature. It's a pitched roof, the top of which is 43 feet to the very top of the building. We measure it, how we measure traditional heights is from the midpoint of where the top of the crest to the fascia board. So, the midpoint is about 35 feet to the, is the technical height of the building, but again, to the very top of the building is 43 feet. They do wrap these architectural features around all four corners of the building, all four sides of the building, there's about six sides of the building, but they wrap it to all elevations contained on the building, and we think it fits in well with the, not only the existing Trinity neighborhood, but also to the Indian Ripple corridor in general. It's got, while it is a large building, it does have, you know, residential characteristics in terms of the pitched roof and asphalt shingles and downsides and the like. Seen here is the proposed landscape plan. You can see that they are showing an abundance of landscaping throughout the parking lots. There is some screening landscaping along this northern parking field, taking a look at it. You know, this is, there's some grade going on back here in the corner, but back in this area, it's fairly flat. So, we have a condition that the final landscape plan be reviewed and approved by staff, and we'll be looking to add some more, probably some evergreen trees in this area here to help block. They do show some evergreen shrubs, but, you know, we want to add that second layer of evergreen trees along this northern property line. There's also, you can see this hash mark along the western property line. It's, the intent there is to save as much of the existing trees as possible, but they are, they are going to need to grade in this area to get a drainage swell, so they can get the water into the pond itself. And so, this not being, when we bring plans forward to you guys, it's about 60% engineered. We get the general idea that it can happen, but they don't finalize the plans until after city council approval. They may end up having to take out a lot of that existing shrub because of the grading. So, there is a caveat that if they do, that they need to supply, you know, replace that with some evergreen trees. Now, this is just a farm field at this time, but on the land use plan, it is shown as low-density residential, so I would anticipate that to be a single-family neighborhood and, or low-density multifamily neighborhood, but we would anticipate that to go as residential in the future, so we want to be proactive and get a screen there now, opposed to wait. There are 17 conditions in your resolution for your consideration. I did want to add one, an 18th condition. We referenced it in the staff report, but didn't put a condition on it, that exterior construction hours on this site, being that there are people that do live at Trinity now, not only in the nursing home, but also in the quads that are around the north and the northeast, northeast section of the, of the site, but also the single-family residential neighborhoods to the north and south. So, construction hours be limited to 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM Monday through Saturday, which is what we typically do on construction projects, and that being exterior only. If they get the building on a roof, it's not really an issue if an electrician needs to go in at 2:00 in the morning to work on it. I mean, it's more grading and roofing and hammering outside is what we're trying to curb. So, that would be condition number 18, but staff does recommend approval of the applicant's request, subject to the 18 conditions in your resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our usual very comprehensive report. Thanks. Thanks to our staff. I will now open the public hearing, so if you wish to speak for, against, or simply have questions, please don't be shy, step forward, give us your name and address, and state your piece. We would ask you to limit it to three minutes, so we're not here all night, but don't let that, don't let that stop you. I'm hearing a whole lot of silence.
Yeah, my name's Walt Serapata, 230 Birch Hall Drive, Beaver Creek. My house is going to be a stone throw away from this place, this new development. The traffic is going to be a problem. The roads, Indian Ripple Road's not built for that. I mean, you have an accident on that road, and there's no way to turn around or anything else. So, I'm just saying, I'm not liking the idea, and I'm sure there's a whole lot of other people don't like it either. So, what is the city getting out of this? The only ones getting anything out of this is Trinity and then a developer. Thank you.
For our benefit, you live on the south side of Indian Ripple Road, is that correct?
Yes.
In the plat, in one of the plats on the south side?
Yeah, I live off of Summer Haven.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Going once, going twice. I'll close the public hearing and ask if we had any written input.
We did have written input.
Okay.
There were two letters that were submitted. The commissioners did receive copies of both of those. They were from Derek and Ruth Petrie of 3261 Tarleton Drive, and Chris and Diana Kugler of 26 Summer Haven Road, and they both expressed their concerns and objection to the case.
Okay. Thank you very much. And gentlemen, I presume you've had a chance to look at those. So, it is time to discuss amongst ourselves, and I'll start on my left side this time.
Mr. Chair, I have no questions.
Okay.
So, in our written input, one of the questions is about, you know, the lighting and the trees there at the top edge facing towards Tarleton. In the staff's report, he stated they're going to add more trees to that line, but could you talk a little bit more about the lighting? Especially if a garage goes in, you would assume that that's going to be a closed, I'm guessing it's a closed, like, parking garage, yes?
It would be, it would be, you know, a traditional pitched roof garage.
Is it going to have a back wall facing, is it going to have a northern wall? Is it going to be an enclosed parking garage or is it going to be an open garage?
It would be enclosed with garage doors on both sides. In terms of the lighting, we have lighting standards, and they'll have to use full cutoff fixtures that don't, you know, shine, it shines, you know, they're focused downward, and they'll have to have zero-foot candles at the property line so that there's no bleed of light.
Thank you. That's all.
Next.
All right. I got a couple of quick questions for staff, and then a couple for the applicant. Why are we keeping these as separate parcels? Is it more of a business entity kind of deal as opposed to joining these to the main parcel?
Well, in terms of the, I mean, that you'll have to need to ask the applicant on their, their reason of why they're separate parcels, but from my understanding, yeah, I mean, they're, it's going to be the same business, but they'll have two, I guess, arms of their operation, so.
Okay.
They just didn't see the need to combine them. They're going to combine the two 5-acre, 10-acre, they're going to combine these into one lot, but keep it separate from the existing.
Okay. So, they're going to be the same facility but on two lots, kind of, okay. All right, well, definitely.
This building, these, this will all be one lot.
Right.
And then, you can see the lot, this will be the new lot line. This line's going to go away, so it'll be one lot here and then one lot here.
Right.
And we have.
Can you go back to the previous slide that you just had up there? So, are they going to make some additional changes then to their existing lot as part of this SSP then?
Yeah, you could see.
Are we able to do that, since it's now technically two separate parcels?
It'll be still the same owner. I mean, they're going to reconfigure this parking area. It's, I don't know if it's easy to see on the aerial, but you can see it's kind of a mishmash, and this comes back at this, you know, more than 90-degree angle, and so what they're going to do is straighten that out. Instead of coming back at this direction, they're going to straighten that out and then reconfigure the parking area, so.
Gotcha.
It gives a better certainty of movement.
Okay. So, we're actually doing an SSP for multiple parcels then, for this particular thing that we're looking at here, this whole thing?
Yeah, I mean, this detention pond will be on this lot. This parking area will be on, the lot line's going to go down here.
So, you're going to be taking out existing, existing building that's there then and ripping that off? Okay. What's the highest building at Trinity right now? What's the height that's currently the tallest building?
I would have to say it's probably, I mean, these, these are, I think these are only one stories. They might be two, but probably 25 feet.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know for sure, but my, no, in the site, just eyeball on the site, I think it's probably 25 feet.
Okay. Okay. And I'll ask the applicant as well, get his input as there. And then to address the traffic generation, what's the typical traffic cycle that's going to be generated from these units?
The traffic generated by these are much lower than if you had a traditional apartment or a single-family residential neighborhood. Single-family residential neighborhood drive has the most traffic of all of, in terms of the number of units. If you had this number of units of single-family, you would, you would have a lot more traffic than a 55 and up or retirement community.
Okay.
That's why we don't require as much parking, because fewer drive.
Yeah. But more, it would be, would be more than low-density R1, though, correct? From the density that they have on this proposed 10 acres?
Well, we don't really consider density when we're talking about retirement communities, like, we wouldn't call.
Well, right, but I mean, this is equitable to a, an apartment complex, for better, for worse, I mean, as far as how the density and how the units are arranged and everything, right? So, I mean, this would generate more traffic or less?
It'd be less traffic than an apartment of that size, yeah.
Okay. Okay. The rest of my questions are actually for the applicant. Appreciate it. So, I guess I will follow up that question. Why are you guys keeping them as separate parcels?
To be honest, I, it was a business decision by the owner, and I'm not 100% sure, other than it was the, the option was available, and they, I don't think it was a requirement to do all three, but they did want it to do the two. So, I don't know if I can expand beyond the owner's business reason why they didn't want to combine all three. I'm not trying to dodge the question.
Sure.
I'm just, I don't know the answer. I'm just honestly don't know the answer, so...
Okay. And then if we could go, well, I guess this will work just fine. I'm going to kind of wheel over here. So to address some of the lighting concerns, so just, again, my two cents, I do a lot of, a lot of this kind of stuff. Would it be possible, A, to bring this road to curve into this road, right? So that keeps as many headlights off of this, this kind of line of sight coming back into Tarleton as possible, so you're not, every single piece of traffic that's headed here has to come up and through. If they could swale off or avoid coming up that way and actually use this as a conduit, then you wouldn't be as imperative there. The other thing I would suggest, this is just a suggestion on my end, is that you flip-flop your roadway and your parking, because what you're doing is you're pointing your headlights away from your units, so you're pointing them to everybody else but not pointing at them at your own buildings. And that's atypical for an apartment style complex, to point their lights outward versus inward when they're building an apartment complex. And would alleviate a lot of these headlight concerns that people are having with the parking and other things, especially as we build in the future, if residential goes there. You're going to have a lot of light pollution concerns with headlights pointing out as opposed to pointing in.
The road that is, that you talked about, the interroad, is the existing road that's there now. It's not, I mean, the situation exists there currently and has since the eighties, whenever the project was built. So that road is existing. So everyone that's coming into the campus, except for those handful of spots to the north, are already traversing that trafficway. So I don't know if there's complaints now, but it's an existing condition that we're just tapping off of the...
Well, like, what I'm saying, though, is we don't go all the way this far north to connect. Why would we not connect further to the south where you don't have as much to traverse to the already, the roads are already there? So you're pushing more cars towards the north to potentially have headlight spill over. Because we know in the winter, this foliage is all gone and it all bleeds over into that existing nori border to the north.
Yeah, I understand your question, and I think the greater good there was trying to make the safe alignment between the entry drives of the existing building, which is why it was moved, and the new building. And we're really looking for a creation of something that is a little bit, has, I'm using this term loosely because it's of a village center, because it's a very small moment, right? So as you kind of, you pull in and you get into that area where you can see the roundabout, you can turn around, we're looking at something there that has a much more hospitable type of environment, having some pavers up along the front of the building. And if you looked at the exterior renderings, we were looking at some storefront glass and trying to get more transparency into the front of the building, with the notion of being that this point here and then the realignment of the road back to the assisted living center, which is really about connecting those two. And so, you know, a lot of these independent living buildings and apartment buildings, if you do a courtyard-type building, you push all the amenities into the courtyard. They just all go into the back, and it's a very backward-facing project. And so it was a purposeful exercise to make it a much more inviting campus, a much more connected campus of integrating what was on the left over to what's on the right by making the front of that building have that sort of transparency and that area. So if I wanted to come over and come in and I wanted to get a cup of coffee and I wanted to sit out in the front on the paved area, that my, I would not be facing the farm field in the back. I would be facing and engaging and interacting with my community, which is, you know, a lot of what we try to do in senior living is, unfortunately, these sometimes become a bit isolated, right? And, you know, mom or dad move on the campus and son and daughter come visit them once a week, and it's kind of the reality of our industry. So the industry is really trying to find ways to open itself up to really sort of fight some of the isolation and some of the depression that the folks feel. So it was a purposeful exercise to begin to open the front of that building in transparency and try to make that visual connection. I hear what you're saying. I know it's terrible to disagree with a planning commission member, so I'm going to mildly disagree that, I feel like that little bit of stretch, if you're, graphically, if you're looking at it, but if you actually go out there and stand, that distance from where we're proposing to the time you get around to the backside of that neighborhood, it's a long way. I've walked that road several times, and it's going to, I mean, it would have to be a pretty impressive headlight system to get beyond those cottages to make an effect. And as far as, the reason that the drive aisles, one thing I didn't maybe explain well enough is that, in discussion with the folks at the fire department and just in our expertise in designing these facilities, we like to try to get the drive aisles rather than the parking aisles as close to the building as possible, because again, these aren't situations where, I should have researched, I should have read the traffic engineering, traffic studies and tell you that it's about, it's about point four, it's one out of, it's four out of ten, it's one out of every four maybe that have a car and drive. Because you're making the decision to come here, you've already made the decision that I can't cook for myself, or I can't clean for myself, and so I'm not going to go to the store, I'm not going to run out and go to dry cleaning. So the car is something a lot of times that people just hang on to, because it's an emotional thing, they don't want to give up. And so, I mean, if we generate forty trips a day, twenty in and out, I'd be super surprised. These are very low-traffic generators. And so, for us, it's the greater good to have the drive aisles along the building for emergency services. So that way, if they need to get an ambulance up near the building quickly or a rescue vehicle, it's almost the greater good to have the drive aisle there rather than the possibility. And I think it's a, honestly, I think it's a, we have a fifty-foot buffer zone, fifty feet is a good-sized room, and we have a line of trees for people that drive their car once a month, once every couple of weeks tops. I think it's a very minimal hazard, in my opinion. We are, obviously, as was mentioned, we do have to design towards, you know, everybody designs towards night sky requirements now. You can't do a project without cutoff fixtures, without photometrics, and we did a full photometric study and submitted that to prove that lighting is not, we're not over-lighting the site and we're not doing light pollution, so everything has to be, it's just that has been, as you guys are well aware, that's been code for a very long time, and so we're held to that requirement. And then again, this is a residential campus, and so this is not going to be lit up like a target parking lot. That's not what we want. It's going to be lit up like, this is where people live, this is their home. And so it's going to be lit appropriately for your house.
Okay. Perfect. That is all the questions. I just had one question for the fire department. Randy, number two. Are you okay with that traffic circle? That is a hard left to get a full-size engine in there.
Commission members, yes, it is, it's fine. We're running our template through there. There were some minor alterations that we were looking at, but...
Okay. It just looks like a hard left to get a full-size engine in?
No, it's okay. We'll ensure that their curbing and their access is appropriate.
Okay, so you can jump it if you need to. Okay. Perfect. That's all the questions I have.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
I just have one, Randy.
Sir, just concerned about the last parking spot on the left side. Is there enough room to turn around in that cutout on the left?
Here?
Right here. Because if somebody drives down, are they, and, you know, that spot's full.
That's the back spot. That's for backing in.
Oh, that's for backing in?
Yeah, I could find it better, where you could see the striping. Yeah.
Yeah.
If you're there, that's why we got this little bump out, so that you can back and go.
But I guess what if the spot's full, right? So somebody drives down, now they're stuck.
And driving in reverse.
They'd have to back up the whole way.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. Yeah, I mean, we can, we can have them stripe this last one as a no-parking turnaround zone.
Okay. Okay.
That was my only concern.
Don't run it off. Just a couple of questions. The little, in the far southwest corner of the parking lot, yep, is that where the dumpster goes, next to that little appendix there?
Right.
Okay. I couldn't find it on the chart, and that's the only dumpster for the whole facility.
And that's, I asked them that same question, and you know, that seems like a, one small area, but they said it's sized, it's big enough for them, what they need.
Maybe they don't generate trash like they don't generate traffic trips.
They did say that they'd have more, you know, it would be not just once-a-week deliveries, I mean, pickup services.
Right. And just kind of to foot-stomp a little bit, because this surprised me the first time I heard it, that a regular apartment unit generates fewer trips per unit than a single-family development of the same number of units.
Yeah, by, off the top of my head, I think it's almost double.
Right. And this, of course, would generate fewer because there are fewer people with cars. Okay.
Correct.
That always surprised me the first time I heard it, so...
I think it has to do with school and, you know, a lot more, apartments typically have fewer students per unit than a neighborhood, a single-family neighborhood.
Now, the HVAC units, I know one of the things we always talk about is HVAC units being hidden, and they're obviously not on the rooftops.
Correct. They'll be, they'll need, they'll be integrate, integrate, integrate...
Integrate.
That with the landscaping around the building.
Okay. Okay. So they'll be ground-mounted units rather than rooftop?
Certainly.
Okay. And, yeah, I've got a couple of questions for you, too. You say that the nearest single-family is like three hundred feet away.
Yeah, up in the northeast corner.
My real concern is along that northern, the northern edge of the parking lot. I would like to see if, I don't know if we need to make this as a condition or just to tell staff. I think what is needed there, being as flat as that is, is not only some trees, or some trees or bushes as screening, but also a berm. I mean, we don't have to have, we don't have to have Mount Etna there, but a four- or five-foot berm, we've got the space for it with a fifty-foot setback.
We can, I can certainly have the engineers look at it, because I think it has to do with trying to get the water from this corner down into the pond, and so a berm would push water back into the neighborhood to the north. Again, we could take a look at it.
Okay.
I don't want to create a hill behind it, because that runs water.
And, you know, realizing, realizing that there's still a lot fewer traffic motions, particularly at night, in the middle of the winter with all the leaves off the trees, I still don't want headlights shining into the existing residential units, residential houses on the other side.
We'll really take a hard look at this northern, maybe we already were going to, but I just assure you that we're taking, we're going to take a hard look at this and make sure that they fill that in with adequate evergreen shrubs.
Right.
That stay full all year round, and then also some evergreen trees back here to the north as well.
And I think that's all I have for you, but I do have one question for the applicant, and it's just purely curiosity. And that is, this is independent living, but you said there's going to be a kitchen and a dining room. Does that mean that the units do not have kitchens?
No, no, they have, they will have kitchens in the units, and they will have full baths, and...
Well, I hope so.
Yes. They are full-functioning, very modern unit, but they have a kitchen. It's just a decision that the, the, the church wants to provide to have that. And a lot of independent living, you'll get usually one meal with your rent, and sometimes you can get tier packages, and I'm not going to pretend to know all of their packages, but I think they'll get at least one meal a day and then probably two if they wanted to buy the second. And then obviously, à la carte.
Okay.
If you wanted to come have lunch there someday, we'd be happy to have you.
I'm not quite that old yet. I'm getting there.
You can come as a visitor. I wanted to address the HVAC, because I don't want to be disingenuous.
Oh, absolutely.
The units, each apartment unit has its own self-contained unit within a closet, but inside the unit.
Okay.
So I think your question was, you see a lot of multifamily, where you have all these little individual condensers for a hall, and we don't have that, because we have a self-contained, what's called a vertical DTAC or a vertical terminal, vertical terminal unit with inside it, and all that stuff is housed with inside the unit, so you don't see it from the outside.
Okay.
Our common areas, I do think we're going to have a flat area, but it's going to be screened, so when I say a flat area, it would be covered by parapet, so the mechanical units would be behind, but it's probably going to be most advantageous, we're not at mechanical-engineering stage yet on this project, as you could probably understand, but I would anticipate for like the dining room and for the kitchen area that we would have some commercial-sized units that would be more economical for the community to have it on the roof. But I understand what you, you don't want to see them, so you want them screened.
Correct.
And we don't want, we don't want to see them either, so...
This is, this is something typical, I know with a lot of commercial facilities where they have a pitched roof like that, one of the things that we require, and I'm sure Randy can speak to this, is we require that any rooftop units like that be screened, so they can't be seen from the ground.
That's understood.
And so I'm sure they're going to ride hurt on you for that. I think that's all I have, too. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did we answer, I think we have asked all the questions that were in the written input, have we not? So I'll ask then, if there's no further discussion, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I think, one of the concerns in the written input was concerning the traffic on Indian Ripple, but I think we speak about with a lot of our large projects is, we can't really use that as a consideration, right? So I just wanted to make sure that was stated.
And just looking back in the past where we've had, there have been several, both nursing homes, nursing homes, independent living, assisted living facilities that have gone up in the last few years. One further west on Indian Ripple, Randy, help me out, what, which one is that?
Harbor.
Yes. And they have not...
You've got Harbor Chase and Leo Brown, and I haven't heard of any kind of traffic.
And the one on Shaker Town.
That's Leo Brown, Traditions.
Right, Traditions.
Traditions. Formerly Leo Brown.
I drive, I drive that several times a week, and I hardly ever see any cars going in or out of that.
There's not really a rush hour for this type of thing.
No, definitely not. It's a slow hour. But I rarely see traffic in and out of there, so I really don't, I think that's kind of a non-starter in terms of really making a huge difference in the traffic on Indian Ripple, and we would never, ever connect that with the existing residential.
No.
So. And just one other point, too, and that is, the, I guess I'll just have to stand up there and point. This existing street that leads to these independent units faces that way anyway, and that, those independent units have been there, what, ten years?
I think we got those approved in, I want to say eleven or twelve, so at least, you know, seven or eight, nine years.
It's been a while. So that street already exists, and I don't think we're going to really add to much traffic on that. And go for that berming or whatever, the...
We'll look to see if it's feasible from the engineering.
The more the merrier in terms of screening on that north side. That is really my only concern. The property to the west is undeveloped, and we'll let the developers of that someday worry about that end, because we're taking care of it on this side. So, okay.
Motion received.
Further questions, gentlemen? Okay. Then I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, just...
Sure.
If we can, when you make the motion with the additional...
Oh, I wouldn't let him forget.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve PUD 21-1, SSP number two with the eighteen conditions.
Okay. And Melissa, you have that eighteenth condition?
I do.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I second.
I have a second. And anything else for the good of the order? And I'll have Ms. Melissa read the roll call.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries five-zero, and we will be looking forward to another addition to our community, particularly for folks who are getting to the point where they might need one of these one of these days. Okay, we have a second public hearing, and I believe this is the one we need to have tabled. So if I can have a motion to table, table with continuance, is that the term we want?
If you could open, have the clerk call it.
Okay.
And then make a motion to table and continue the public hearing until next month.
Got it. Okay.
So this is case number PUD 97-1, mod. 4 of 21. It's on an application filed by the Kleinenjers Group, 6219 Center Park Drive, Westchester, Ohio, 45069. The application requests a major modification to the specific site plan to allow for the construction of a 14,650 square-foot freestanding emergency department building located directly to the south of 2440 Lakeview Drive. The properties are further described as Book Four, Page Six, Parcel 122, and part of Parcel 116 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. And we have had a request from the applicant to table, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would request to table PUD 97-1, mod 4 of 21, and continue the hearing until next month.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second.
And I have a second. And let's read the roll.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries, 5-0, and we will move right along to our third public hearing.
This is case number Z 21-1, on an application filed by Raj K. Soyn, 1129 Miamisburg-Cinerville Road, Suite 100, West Carrollton, Ohio 45449. The application requests the rezoning of 5.885 acres from R1A, one-family residential district, to A1 agricultural district, and the rezoning of 0.739 acres from A1 agricultural district to R1A, one-family district. The property is located at 2489 Kemp Road, further described as Book Four, Page 16, Parcel Two, and part of Parcel One on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. As is our procedure with a public hearing, I will ask the applicant to come and tell us what you have in mind, and we'll go from there.
Good evening. My name's Dave Holsmeyer, I'm representing Raj in this. Basically, working with his estate and his heirs, he feels that it'd be advantageous to eliminate that, not eliminate the driveway, but eliminate it from the residential portion and combine it back into the farm. It fits more with the farm. And then reconfigure his residential lot somewhat to fit more with the existing structure and amenities out there. Of course, he'd always have driveway access out there to Kemp Road, and he would only request that he not be limited to the current alignment, if in the future he could realign that, to provide a alternate access, not alternate, but a replacement access to the, to the road. Obviously, you wouldn't be moving a driveway that, that size willy-nilly, so. That's pretty much the gist of his application.
Okay. Great, that's what I needed to know.
That's all you need?
Yep, yep.
Right, thank you.
And we'll let staff delve into it further.
Sir, the case you have before you is Z 21-1, again, it's the Soyn Estate rezoning. Right now, there's a large portion of the, the site is, let's see here, it's 125-acre site that we're talking about, and comprises of two lots. The large lot kind of, it's just, it goes around the existing, it's not really a flaglot, it's like a deflated balloon lot. But, and inside this, along the driveway and inside, encompass the house is, is R1A. And as, as the applicant had stated, they're looking to have the R1A just be around the house, and then the rest of the site being A1. We don't have an A1, an agricultural classification on our land use plan, so there's no incompatibility with the land use plan, is what they're, they're proposing. Right, right now, he has about 10 acres of R1A, and that includes the driveway and the house, and about 115 acres of A1, and what they're looking to do is have about 4 acres and 122 acres. But the house itself, which is, you know, significant house, will stay R1A and be still classified tax purposes as, as residential, it's the rest of the area would be the agriculturally zoned. Again, this just gives a better idea, the area highlighted in green is what he'd be removing from R1A and into A1, along with this little portion down here, from A1 to R1A, I'm sorry, R1A to A1. And then this area highlighted in yellow is what they'd be reclassifying from current A1 to R1A. So you would get, right now, the zoning map looks like this, and then what it would look like if this were approved would be this R1A island. In order for them to be able to remove those lot lines, they'll, they'll have to do a replat. Now typically, replats can be done by staff in-house. And because I'm not creating a new buildable lot, there's two lots there now, and there'd be two lots at the end. So that's something that we can do at the staff level, but we can also add a caveat. I can have them add a, a, in the text on the actual record plan, which is the document that would be recorded with the county, that there'd be an easement, only be, to be removed with permission of the city or the planning commissioner or city council. I mean, we can add that language on the actual subdivision itself, so that we know that, you know, well, yes, there, there would be an island lot out there that they would have permanent access to a, a public road. So this being a straight rezoning, you know, there aren't really any conditions we can add to it, but I'll be happy to answer questions following the public hearing.
Thank you. This is an unusual public hearing. You don't usually have public hearings on rezonings, but we do. So is there anyone here who wishes to speak about this?
Hi, my name is Sandy Ronzley, I also represent Raj Soyn, I just want to do a couple of clarifications, if I could.
Thank you.
The reason that we were looking at this is about once a year, they look at their estate plan, and they decide, and they've had advisors tell them, well, you know, you kind of have this land limited, your heirs are really limited what they can do with it, you know, the road is dedicated with the house. If we could move that and have that zoned, and the intention is to always have, no matter what is done with the property surrounding it, to always have that easement for the residential lot there. So the, what we were proposing is put that road, the driveway basically, with the surrounding lot and the barn, there's a barn down there on the lower, kind of left-hand corner over there, so that in the future, his heirs aren't really bound to, they're not limited what they can do. So I just kind of wanted to make that clarification, just so that you guys knew what the intent was. The easement will always be there, and there's no problem, they just want the ability to relocate it if it's more advantageous to the heirs to do so.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the clarification. Others who wish to speak on this particular item? Going, going, gone? Did we have any written input?
No, we did not.
We did not. I'll just kind of throw this open, gentlemen, questions? Well, I, I guess my only concern would be creating a, a flaglot without a flagpole. But as long as it's being recorded, that there has to be an access easement. Randy, would that access easement be limited only to Kemp, or could it be limited to, and I've forgotten the name of the street that comes out at the end of the woods? To your left.
Well, right now, the easement would stay over the driveway, easements are a lot easier to move than zoning and lot lines. So right now, I would still want them to have the easement over top of the driveway, and then in the future.
But that could be moved?
That can be moved.
Okay.
In-house.
Okay.
Now, if they, if they don't agree, then we can come back to planning commissioner, and then you guys can decide where the easement should go, but.
Okay.
Randy, you keep saying there's an easement over the driveway.
There will be.
Who's granting the easement? I mean, he owns both parcels.
He would grant it as a access easement, it'd be shown on the lot, so that if, if, for whatever reason, somebody else acquired the house, it wouldn't be unable to access, you wouldn't have to have a helicopter to get it.
Well, legally speaking, there are lots.
Private access easement.
There are lots that can be bound, landlocked, right? And you'd have the easement by necessity to the closest road. But it has to be recorded.
It has to be. You, I don't think you can have just an easement because, it has to be granted by somebody.
Well, in the state of Ohio, you can, you can have an easement by necessity if your property doesn't reach.
I have to defer to the attorney on that one.
Not ideal for certain.
That would not be ideal for certain, but I would cer, I'm not as familiar with that particular topic, I would need to do some research, but obviously, that's not what's being planned here.
Correct. I'm just trying to, yeah, I'm just trying to, to.
We're, we're trying to avoid the situation where we would have to get an easement by necessity. So right now, the easement would be shown over the existing driveway. If in the future, they want to split, you know, get rid of that driveway and access, you know, the, like you said, the woods subdivision in the back, as long as, I mean, because there's public access easement on that, then, you know, we would move the easement at that time. But we want to just ensure that there's always clear access to the house, even if it is surrounded by private land.
Since the same individual owns both properties right now, it's kind of a no-brainer. But if, if two different entities own the two parcels, it would be landlocked without an easement in there. And you don't want to have to negotiate it after the sale.
That's, like you said, not ideal.
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, I'm just trying to, to think through for myself what the benefit is, and I understand the benefit of, you know, if, if the heirs were to split the land later, they don't have to traverse an easement or get an easement later from, from each other. But yeah, it just, I guess, it removes a few acres of land from an R1A designation.
Downzoning is good.
What, yeah, well, yeah. Are there, are there tax implications to changing from an A, R1A to an A1?
In this particular case, I mean, the house is.
The majority, yeah.
Right. A majority of the value of that is in the, in the, in the large estate home, so, yeah, there, there may be a small amount, but it would be negligible compared to what the taxes currently are. But that's not how, we wouldn't base our decision on that anyways.
Gentlemen? Okay, then I'll ask for a, a motion. I don't think there are any conditions on this, are there? No.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve case Z 21-1, the Soyn Estate rezoning, with the zero conditions.
Mr. Chair, I second.
I have a motion and a second. Further comments? Okay, I'll ask for a roll reading, please, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries, 5-0, and we are through with our public hearings for this evening, so we'll move on to subdivisions. And the first one is going to sound reasonably familiar. It is a, a cleanup on the Trinity Community Site.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, this is, as you stated, this is very recently approved site plan, and they're looking to create a unified lot. These aren't platted right now, so they need to go through a final subdivision on unplatted land. This would, right now, it's 9.998 acres of these two combined, and what they're proposing to do is split that off, actually, if I can get to it, where Lot One would be 9.723 acres, and then they dedicate about three-quarters of, of an acre to the city as right-of-way for future road improvements on Indian Ripple Road. We did route this out to, you know, applicable agencies, and didn't get back any comments that can't be addressed or weren't addressed.
Gentlemen, questions? This is pretty straightforward, I think. You don't want to have a building leaking across two property lines, that's not good planning. No questions, no comments? Okay, I'll ask for a motion then. Come on, guys, I can't make the motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve case number S 21-3 with the attached three conditions.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
And I have a second. And Ms. Gillaw will read the roll, and we'll be set.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries, 5-0, so we, we now have a single lot for that new building. And we, our last item tonight is another subdivision, S 21-4.
Yes, sir, the, as planning commissioner may recall, late last year, a 53-acre site for 100, 280,000 square-foot manufacturing facility on Research Park was approved. One of the conditions of approval was that they get the unplatted 53.5 acres into a subdivision and platted, and so that we can get all the easements recorded, and that's why we're here this evening, is they're looking to create a single lot, Lot One, of 53.483 acres, all in, in one encompassing lot, and then they show detention easements and utility easements along the front and around the, the approved stormwater detention pond. And then they have some public water easements along the perimeter of the, of the site that directly above the I-675 frontage. Again, reroute, rerouted these out to appropriate agencies to get back any negative comments or anything that would prohibit approving this subdivision with the conditions that's found in your staff report, which are R3.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm actually gonna need to recuse myself from this, as my company is providing materials that are gonna be supplied to that building site, so it could be a conflict of interest.
Okay.
Do I need to move, since this is gonna be a quick, okay, all right.
Okay. Questions, comments, please?
Just keep your head down.
I've got just one for you. I think in a previous discussion that we had, is there also an easement along the west property line for future access?
Along the country club, there was not, there's about 200 feet of, oh, oh, okay, I get what you're saying. The.
Right.
The buffer.
Exactly.
That, that, we didn't want to, if that's gonna go, that would go a public road, and we'd, we'd end up having to buy that later on.
Okay, but do, can we do, is there a way to do that, not necessarily buy it, but put in here that it would make, well, it simply makes sense to have a connector from there up to Indy, up to Linden Avenue?
Right. That's why we had to put that 100-foot buffer, or 50-foot buffer. That's why the buffer was created in this zoning.
That's what the buffer's for, got it. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that, that that didn't go by the by.
No, it's still in.
That's already in there.
Yeah, it's just not on the record plan, it's in the zoning.
Just, just, just want to make sure.
Sure, no, you're, you're correct, this is a good opportunity in the future.
You don't want to lose, you don't want to lose that possibility, because once it's gone, it's gone.
Certainly.
So, okay. Other comments, questions? Need a motion then?
Mr. Chair, motion to approve case number S 21-4 with the attached three conditions.
Okay, I have a motion. And I have a second, and we'll read the roll one last time for tonight.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries, 5-0, we are fresh out of agenda items, anything for the good of the order? I'm sorry?
4-0.
4-0, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You didn't count.
Yeah, I did not count that time.
Okay, so we are fresh out of things, anything for the good of the order?
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
So done, at 7:10. He seconded it, I heard.